Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started. It is 10 o'clock and it is December. Wow. It is Monday, December 4th, and this is the City Council regularly scheduled work session. And we hold work sessions as a way to discuss items that will be coming to us in the future for decisions. Sometimes they'll be coming to us in two weeks for an official council vote, and sometimes there's something we need to be talking about over the next few months to make decisions about going forward. We don't take any formal action in work sessions. We don't vote on anything. And we don't do public comment because we're not voting on anything. And when and if we have something in front of us, we always take public comment, and that would be our regularly scheduled council meetings where we do that. But we do record work sessions, and they're really usually quite interesting because we really dig into some of the issues. So if you're listening in, thanks for joining. We jump right in and get started with work session, and we have quite a few items this morning. We're going to start with item A, which is the Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA, with the Montrose Recreation District. And I'll turn this over to Ann Morgan Thaler and Jayce Hawkewell. And I just will add a little context. This is fantastic agreement. This was started when the Rec District was about to open the new Rec Center. So I think this has been in place since about 2016 as a way for the city and the Rec District to share some services, which ultimately reduces costs to taxpayers. And I'm excited to see it still going strong. So let's hear the current iteration.
Thank you, Council. I will start. Jayce and I have been working on this together this year, and next year you'll see this work happening solely from the Planning and Community Development Department. The partnership is still really strong between the Rec District and the city. The Rec District wasn't able to make it today. We work really closely with Jeremy Master, and he's on vacation, and I'm not sure that anyone else came. I checked, but sorry, no. Okay. But we've been talking closely with him, and there are some changes for this year. But as Mayor Bynum said, the goal of the agreement is partnership and to save our community resources and money so that the Rec District and the city are working together where we can. There are a few changes for 2024. I don't consider them to be major, but I want to make sure you're aware of them. The city will provide asphalt patching or crack sealing services to the district, which is the Montrose Recreation District, for any facilities that they designate up to a cost of $4,000. In the past two agreements, the Rec District and the city have instead designated certain facilities. So last year, I think it was the Fieldhouse Parking Lot where we would work to do some crack sealing and patching. Both entities decided instead to have the set dollar amount, which is a trade in a way between the Rec District and the city. And then the Rec District will contact us in order to tell us where they'd like those services to occur. And we have detailed costs in the exhibits in the agreement that outline what those costs would be. If the Rec District needs more patching, crack sealing, then they can ask for more, and they just pay based on those rates in the agreement, which are really good rates and likely better than they could get on the open market, especially for just little jobs. It's hard to hire a contractor right now for just little pothole patching. The other change is that we've broadened the agreement, at least the language in the agreement, to include not just the Cerise Fields and the Rotary Amphitheater, but to acknowledge that the Rec District also uses other areas in Baldridge Park, the Baldridge Park Regional Park Complex. For example, sometimes they have some camps, and they're using other areas, or they're doing a little bit of mountain biking on the trails. And so we wanted to clarify that the Rec District can use all of those areas that are open to the public through this agreement as well. There is a new park that will be built in 2024. We're calling it the Flex Park. It's in Colorado outdoors, just behind the Flex Buildings where Maslow is. And we identified that in the agreement this year and the associated maintenance responsibilities that we share between the Rec District and the city. Broadly, the Rec District will maintain that park, excuse me, as long as they're a tenant, they're in their Flex Rec space. The city will provide free Black Canyon cards to full-time Montrose Rec District employees instead of discounted annual passes. We talk every year with the Rec District about what a meaningful discount would be for their staff. We've offered discounts on the annual passes, and the truth is that most of the employees are not interested in getting an annual pass at the Black Canyon Golf Course. Instead, they like to golf here or there. The Black Canyon card is available to any member of the public for $50 and offers discounts on rounds of golf, buckets of balls, and on the restaurant. And so Rec District employees will receive this for free. So it's a value of $50 per employee off the top, and then they get discounts along the way. So they were, staff seemed to be excited about that. And then we updated all of our trash recycle and other fees with the current rates. And those are the changes that we wanted to highlight to you today. If this looks good to you, we would bring it to you at the next council meeting for adoption.
I just wanted to point out that it's really interesting because now that we have our asphalt recycler that has given us the ability to really have a little bit more flexibility on helping them with patches on potholes and stuff. And I think that's really a real benefit, not only to them, but also to us.
Any other council questions or concerns about this IGA?
I just have a question. It says the city will maintain the Rec District's vehicles. Does that include fuel and all that stuff too? Or are we providing them with fuel for them to drive around?
Yes. So a simple answer is we maintain it in our shop, which include, the rate for that is included in this agreement as well as fuel.
Okay. Well, it says maintenance, and I didn't see anything about fuel and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, and just to our ability. So we'll generally maintain it. If there's major breakdowns, those may be outsourced, but for in-house repairs and maintenance, that is provided. Yep.
Anything else from council? Okay. If you think of anything, or someone from the public asks you something, and you still have a little bit of time before we vote on it, and if anyone from the public has something they want to say, that we will, like we always do, have public comment before we take a vote. Okay. Next item is the Cobble Creek West Utility Service Agreement. City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me get going on some screen share here. We're joined online by Jamie Temple, who's the purchaser of this property. And Flint Ogden and Randy Griffin are always here, are also here with us. They're kind of the current developers of Cobble Creek area, and that pertain to this request here. But once I can screen share, show you where we're talking about. So the request that's come to the city, and this has been in the works for oh, six, eight months now, as we work through our water resources planning and their development plans, is for the city to provide water service outside of our service area. And I'll go into the history of a lot of that, just to make sure everybody's up to speed. And this is for the Cobble Creek West property. So to help orient everybody on this map here, this is kind of Cobble Creek proper. Let me turn on city limits. See how it lies. So in Cobble Creek Annex, they kind of did some multi-step annexation to kind of get out here. It's kind of the southwesternmost appendage of the city.
That's one that's recently zoned.
There was a sketch plan on this property. I think the zoning is, oh, they did the condition, some of the conditional stuff was on the southern property, if I remember.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, to kind of help everybody get their bearings, this is kind of Cobble Creek proper in the center here. As you go towards the south, I think that's what they've called Phase Three over the years. Spruce Point is kind of at the northern end, also more or less part of Cobble Creek in certain ways. And then the portion we're talking about here is Cobble Creek West, which is right here. So annexed back in is, with all those annexations, as Cobble Creek was developing in the late 90s, early 2000s. And then this portion has kind of sat as the next logical progression as they work out in their various directions out from the core. The next map I'll turn on here is our Water Districts. So as a reminder, within the Unco-paired Valley, we're all serviced, or for the most part, there's some small exceptions, but for the most part, we're all serviced by Project Seven as the kind of core supplier of our municipal water. Project Seven includes, I'm going to do it on memory here, City of Montrose, Menocan Water District, Chapita Water District, Olatha, Town of Olatha, City of Delta, Tri-County Water District, and then they call the Seventh Partner Unco-paired Valley Water Users because they're the reason we have the water, operate it through the tunnel for us to feed us year round. Within those, when all those kind of districts were established, initially, all the various water providers had their own systems. Some had wells, some were tying back to the city's treatment plant, which was owned by the city at the time. But as that transitioned over time, and then as Ridgeway occurred over time, the water districts have kind of formed and reformed, and there's various agreements among other parties. But essentially, it's a boundary that kind of tells where they are supposed to serve. They set all those up, looking at kind of the city's urban growth area, topography, all these kind of limitations, hydraulic areas, or hydraulic limitations on the system of where it makes the most sense for each party to serve. But then they provided a means to modify those boundaries if needed, if it makes sense for, you know, urban density or where growth is happening. You can imagine back, you know, in the 70s, 80s, when this was being done, obviously, it's a very different looking world now as far as the city goes. And so they were kind of taking a guess at what was going to go where. And again, also kind of geared towards where the trunk lines are and where it makes sense to serve efficiently from a, from a dollar standpoint, to keep the rural systems rural and the urban systems urban and compact and not have sprawl. So that, let's, let me just turn that on just to give you a feel for what's in this area. Water Districts. And they use the word districts here. They're technically service areas because they're not, and some are technically districts under the state and some are not. It's kind of a, there's a lot of nuances to that, but I'll try and refer to them as water service areas. So I think there's a way for me to make this easier to see. There we go. So it's kind of the same overlay here. You can see Cobble Creek right in the middle. All of the green is Chapita's Water District, Water Service Area, sorry. All of the yellow is City of Montrose. So if we zoom out a little bit, you can see, you know, for the most part, the core city area is all already within our existing district. You get down into the rural, you're either in Tri-County or, in this case, Chapita. As you get to the north, you get into some Menocan. These are all available online, and they're pretty stable. They don't change very often. But there's two ways you can change. You can wholesale change the district, so you can essentially do a survey, modify this map as shown here, or you can have agreements with, and there's advantages and disadvantages to all this. Or you can have agreements to service outside of the area. You know, a good example of that is somebody's, there's one house coming in along 6450 Road, they're technically in our service area, but all, we don't have lot lines out there yet. We would allow, you know, that one house to go on to Tri-County until the time comes that a city main is out there. And those are a little, you know, just like permission to serve letters, more or less. But what we're talking about is a larger scale development here. So the request before us is to service Cobble Creek West again here. This is kind of Western appendage. When it's all said and done, they plan to build out to about 200 units, so pretty substantial development. You know, we, it's kind of interesting, over the years, back in the day, you know, they kind of, I wouldn't say fight over water, but everybody kind of wanted, everybody wanted to serve as much as possible. You know, since Ridgeway was put in, we're paying for 10,000 acre feet a year whether we use it or not. And so the sooner you can bring customers on, online to serve, you can start getting water usage to repay, you know, that, that payment that we're making for raw water out of Ridgeway on an annual basis. And that all ties back to like the repayment of Ridgeway Dam, essentially, and that we're paying the Bureau of Reclamation to kind of hold our 10,000 acre feet. Nowadays, everybody has watched the news. Water is, is on everybody's minds. And so we take a very careful approach to these kind of things, and I'll kind of go into what the modeling says. But generally speaking, we want to make sure we're doing what's right for everybody in these kind of situations. So initially, you know, I think our stance going into these kind of things is if it can be serviced by their service area, we would prefer that, just from a safety and protection of water resources thing. That wasn't the case here. So in this case, Chapita's district is pretty rural and small in this area, creates two problems for Chapita. One is hydraulic, so they wouldn't have the hydraulic capacity to support urban levels of development. So when you start, you know, getting 200 units on a lot like that, you, really, the limiting factor is fire protection. So there's a certain degree of fire protection needed. Their system is, is far from it and would require millions in upgrades in order to service it. So then the question is, you know, would the city entertain allowing us to go onto their system? So as you can see, that question was also asked when Cobble Creek proper was made. It's surrounded by Chapita. That all used to be Chapita, and when Cobble Creek initially came in, they granted use to come onto the city's water. And so because of that, there's a pretty robust system. We have the new standpipe up on Sunset Mesa, which helps bolster pressures and redundancy and resiliency in this area. So the system is well-built to service urban levels of development in this area because of those previous investments. And so that's why the question came to the city. When they did that, usually there's a buyout. That's something they negotiate, the developer negotiates separately with Chapita, you know, because, you know, they would claim their lost revenue and what have you. There's varying opinions on how all that works and legitimacy of that, but nonetheless, that's a private issue. So they've worked that out independently with Chapita and are paying them, it's in the agreement, 100,000 to, to buy out. So for this development here, the proposed, within the agreement, there is a proposed kind of sketch plan. So this developer is, pretty far down the road, they've gone through the sketch plan process with our planning department already. You can see, you know, 200 units or so, plus or minus of proposed development out there. And it's kind of on the average lot size, I think, .3-ish acres or so, so not large rural style development. It's kind of matching more or less Cobble Creek that's there, maybe a little smaller on the lot size. And so I think that, before I dive into the numbers of the water resources, any questions up to that point on the, how we got here part?
It doesn't drink or tie into the water, but what about sewer?
So this one's great news for the city. So the original annexation agreement for this one said they had kind of realized the problems they were having with the E1 pump systems in Cobble Creek at that point, by the time this one annexed. So the annexation agreement for this requires a gravity line to run down to the common lift station at Spruce Point, which is two good things. Obviously, it doesn't bring on E1 pumps, but the Spruce Point Lift Station, the, some of the major issues we're having out there are sewer age. So that was built for full build out, or for reasonable build out. They haven't gotten there yet, and so the turnover on the sewer is just slower, which creates hydrogen sulfide, which then eats up every manhole between it and the treatment plant. So turnover is a good thing when it comes to lift stations and reducing that sewer age. So it's a great question. And that's already secured through the existing agreements. So the first question we ask when these kind of requests come to us, and they do, we get them from time to time, a couple a year, is do we have the water to do this? We have an existing service area that we're more or less obligated to serve. We want to make sure that we don't expand somewhere and leave the existing area short 50 years down the road. So like I said, we generally have about 10,000 acre feet of water available. Right now, we're using about 4,500 of that, kind of on a peak, higher end of a typical drier year. And so we have some to spare, but we want to make sure that as the build out occurs within our existing obligations, that at the end of that, there would still be some to spare. And that's what a lot of the water resources modeling we worked on last year looked to do. So within that, we modeled every acre of the city, every acre of our Water District, essentially, based on its conservative estimates of its land use and the types of water usage. One thing I will say is, in that, we looked around at lots of different neighborhoods, including Cobble Creek, to see how water usage varies based on subdivision age, type, obviously, land area, median home price. And there's very strong correlations. It's very unique. And what we have, our finding, more working-class neighborhoods and more modern neighborhoods are using less water per capita or per acre. Kind of makes sense culturally, you know, or back in the day, green, green grass was, you know, that's, everybody just did wall-to-wall grass. People are learning now that water is a precious resource. So, and the cost of water, a lot of new houses we're seeing are doing a lot smaller yards, a lot wiser use of landscaping water. I think a lot of people would want to, even on the old ones, but it's just really expensive to change them out as well. But, so we modeled that throughout the entire network, essentially. And with that, we feel at the, at full build out of the city's district, which is probably 75 years down the road, we feel that we should have about 500 acre feet or so to spare that we can comfortably say we have to spare to play with at this point. So then the question becomes, there's, there's uncertainty in that. You know, the, the nice part is, is that, the end of that rope is so far away that the ability to adapt and, you know, everybody started hearing flatten the curve, but, you know, flatten the demand curve over time through conservation and cultural change and water rates, all those things will kind of play into that. Those are all things we work on. But it's, it's, definitely gives you time to plan and react, and from a risk standpoint, there is uncertainty in these, but we are comfortable, even after all of that, that we have, you know, 500 acre feet to play with. And so then the question kind of becomes, where is that? It's a finite resource. Essentially, think of it as economic development pot, you know? Where is the best place to use that? So we looked around, this, the city and areas likely to experience growth that we may be switching either over into Chapita's or Tri-County's district. This is a good one. This is a good fit where, because Cobble Creek is already out there. So you kind of have an already established neighborhood to then put the brakes on that and let it, never let it grow after all that investment in the infrastructure to get there. For those reasons, we felt this was a good use. Other areas that made sense were kind of in the northeast quadrant of town as well, and that's another area we're working on for '24.
One other thing I'd point out is that this parcel is already annexed and zoned, R3, so it's already in the city limits.
Correct.
So actually, that adds to me another layer of the validation of that.
Yep, yep. And that's a good point. So there's areas that are in the city limits outside of our district that can be served by Chapita Waters, or by other waters. So like Brown Ranch is a good example. They have plenty of fire protection, plenty of available water resources, and we say, go ahead and serve them. But there are places that don't. This is one of them. You know, as the Bear Creek area continues to grow out, there's going to be a need for an interconnect there that we're working on, those kind of things. So, yeah. The piece of that, too, is Chapita's water resources, if they put in this many units onto theirs, they would be getting pretty close to the end of their rope, which doesn't leave, you can see their district is enormous. And again, it's kind of, it's kind of built for these things of, makes sense to figure out who, who it makes sense for this to serve for the type of development that's occurring. So, yeah, through our modeling figure, have about 500 to spare. This should use about 100. A nice, a really nice part of these agreements is it really lets us set the terms of use as well. And so what we've written into the agreement here is a lot of the stuff, you know, eventually, I'm sure the city code will get there in these fashions to some degree. That's a lot bigger take. This is a great chance for a trial run where we can dictate. You can't use city water to irrigate large parks or open spaces or rights of way that I'll ask to use irrigation water, which this area does have share water, and they plan to do that anyway, so this allows us to formalize that. We ask them to have water-wise landscaping in their covenants, which is kind of a soft and fuzzy thing. You can't, we're not going to go out and, you know, measure square footage of yards, but generally trying to work to have a mechanism to encourage smarter water-wise landscaping, which again, is kind of happening naturally with, with water rates doing what they're doing. We also want it to be, if you're going to come onto the city's Water District and we're going to give up our water resources, we want it to be for a urban development. Sprawl is, we don't want to do that and then have 10 units out there that now we have miles of extensions to get to the area, and we're only serving 10 units and can't recoup that cost, and that sprawl is, is not cost-effective for our system. So as in all urban development, our system is built for urban systems and for fire flow, which means it's larger, it's more expensive to maintain. So we need the units to be compact in there, not sprawl, to repay that. And so we have conditions in there that if, if for whatever reason it changes hands and they want to go back to a rural style of development, then Chapita could serve them, and it would revert back to Chapita. The other piece we're trying to safeguard in the agreement is speculation. And so we don't want someone to come, buy a piece of land, say, hey, will the city give me water? Have us enter into an agreement, and then they, we tie up our water resources there, and they just use that to have their land go up in value and resell it, but never develop. And so we have kind of timeline constraints here to kind of demonstrate. And this one's great. Jamie's really great developer, excellent to work with. Their team has been good. They're, again, they're, they're, this one's great because they've already done sketch plan. We already know they're serious about it, and it's, it's low risk for us. But we want to make sure that, you know, the economy changes, things happen. If that were the case, if this were to go dormant, that it reverts back to Chapita, and we can then use our water resources elsewhere, should the need arise in the future as we get closer to the end of our rope. And then obviously, they would be the ones to do all the infrastructure, just like any typical development. Waterline extensions would be designed to modern standards, and, and they would be built as part of the development. So that's that part of it. I think just a little commentary. It's really, kind of comes down to a choice of how do we want to allocate our spare, our spare resource. One thing I will say is, and Flint's here, they're working on Spruce Point to the north. You can see Spruce Point is in the green. They've initially have, they're a little closer to the tank and to the larger Chapita lines, and they've been making it work on Chapita so far. But as they hit a certain, kind of cross a certain threshold, they think that Spruce Point would need to come onto the city's system as well, and just to kind of help, that's essentially this square right here. And so I think if council's agreeable to this, that's probably the next one that would come to us. And if you have any input at this stage, that would be helpful. Because they plan to do, you know, kind of, some of the larger ideas, kind of have a mix of housing out here, probably some assisted living to where, you know, as you come out of your house, you can move down the street and into more assisted style, and if I'm speaking out of, or if I'm misrepresenting here, let me know. But, but that is a little higher density, a little higher water demand, a little higher fire protection needs. That is, if they go into that phase of the development, Chapita would not likely be able to service that, and so you'd become infrastructure limited. That would drive a lower density in the area.
I think the same metric, to me, applies, that it's also currently part of city limits, zoned R3A. We're already kind of dealing with a lot of the issues, so.
Yep. Inactively developing too. That's a great thing that we look for.
Do the users pay standard residential rent?
Yes. So within city limits, it would, they would be essentially just straight city water customers. You know, they would, all the development would be on them, and then obviously standard capacity fees, all that that come with each building permit.
How does this impact our water that we get from Project Seven out here? Because I know the new one's not coming online for a few years, and that should accommodate that area over there. But currently, we're taking all the water out of the Gunnison Tunnel, and, and Project Seven's filtering it.
Yep. So no change. This would be serviced even now, and when the new treatment plant comes online, it would be serviced by our existing, the existing Project Seven Treatment Plant, either way. And the hydraulic capacity is there to service it. That's kind of where the tank helped bolster. Everything west of the river has a pretty good run for the foreseeable future as far as hydraulic capacity goes. The, once the treatment plant to the south comes online, it'll serve areas more or less south of Kelowna-ish?
Well, actually, I mean, from a daily standpoint, yes. South of Kelowna would be those customers that would see that water on a continuous basis. The whole concept of the plant is a resiliency project, so it's basically to shore up our supply to the whole Project Seven service area. So if the existing treatment plant needed to be taken out, out of service for maintenance or something, the, the new water treatment plant at Ridgeway would then be able to provide water to all of the customers in the Project Seven service area. So it's not really that certain customers will be on one plant, and certain customers will be on the other. Both systems will be integrated and tied together, and depending on where the demands are and, and where the water supply is, all the customers would be able to be served.
Excellent. So if they were, yeah, technically getting water from the southern plant, it'd probably be in an emergency-type situation, a really high-demand situation.
With, with the current piping configuration, yes.
Did that answer the, your question?
Oh, one more. Okay. When you talk about full build out, does that include any annexations that might go out on the city going east?
Yeah. So the full build out looks at the entire district. So even if it's not even annexed at this point, we included that water usage, assuming the city would kind of continue to grow out, and then areas outside of our service area would be serviced by others, unless they came to us on a case-by-case basis, in which case we would be able to run these evaluations to kind of make that same determination at the time. But it looked at the, those evaluations did not look at city limit-specific. it looked at the, those evaluations did not look at city limit specific. It looked at the water service area because that's what would govern where we, where we would serve.
I feel like we got a preview of what the master water plan looks like. I mean, all the things that go into it when we're talking about our capacity to deliver municipal water and what considerations we're looking at. And when we, in this case, we're not, as, as Councilmember Frank pointed out, we aren't annexing and zoning. That's already been done. But we are looking at bringing them into our water service area and how do we make that decision with a seventy-five year view? And thank you. I think a lot of information, but you did a great job explaining it, I think. That being said, it is complicated. Are there any additional questions or comments? I think when people ask us, is there enough water? This is exactly the kind of conversation that we'll be having more and more often, I would imagine.
Certainly. Yep. It's, we get asked that a lot. And that's kind of the driver for the master plan to demonstrate what's there. And they are finalizing their report on that. Another piece of that, though, is going to be, what's it mean, you know, like as kind of planning gets, just went through, like, we have all these, like, the housing needs assessment, well, what's it mean for code? So now we have water resources. What's it mean for our land use code and where do we want to delve into for conservation and things of that sort? So that's what twenty twenty-four is geared towards. So I think initially, we'll have the report as soon as that's done, probably late first quarter. We'll go through it, just so you guys know where it landed. It's, I hope, you know, I enjoy it. It's really interesting, though, when you start looking at use behaviors and how it changes through areas and, and kind of just understanding all of that, what it means for us. Because, you know, per capita basis, we do pretty good, surprisingly. And a lot of that's just the economics of it.
Right.
But it's, it's really fun stuff. So I think we'll preview that first and then go into, you know, through twenty-four, probably spill into twenty-five, what's it mean for our code and land use regulations. So more, more to come on that, for sure.
Really interesting. Thank you. I don't see any other comments or questions from council on this item. Okay. Thank you very much. And again, if anyone does think of a question later, or a member of the public has a question, there's time between now and when we vote on this item to bring up more questions and make sure you have all the information you need.
Because it'll be January.
It'll be January. Yeah, this is our only meeting in December. So, okay. Next up is the North Woodgate Extension Project Memo of Agreement. Again, City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Okay. Screen share. Again, we're joined online by Cheryl Miller. She's the property owner, president for Marketplace. Can you hear us okay, Cheryl?
Yes, I can. Can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for being with us. I'm going to pull up a map. Can't present without a map. So this is pretty straightforward. It's a follow-up to some of our previous discussions about, you know, larger level planning in the Woodgate corridor. Go down to the snazzy map here. Okay. So this is kind of help orient people. On the top there is Murdochs. Townsend's on the left side of the screen. And then through the middle is what I'll be referring to today as the Marketplace Stores. That's Big Five, Palace Liquors, Harbor Freight, and Office Depot. And, you know, as you get further to the south, you get into kind of the Penn Mall area, is what they refer to that. But when the Woodgate realignment happened, that's when we started discussions on acquisitions for the roundabout there. That prompted discussions with the landowner to the south of the baggage road. They were interested in a Woodgate baggage road to service kind of this Penn Mall area and help them kind of make that rear focused to line up with all points and all of the development that's going on there and help improve truck circulation, which then prompted us to engage the Marketplace Mall owners. So this is all set up as a county minimized shopping center essentially. So they have, represented by a property owners association, which I believe votes by the square foot. Kind of the parking lot and all of its buildings kind of managed collectively at the Marketplace Mall that goes up to Encanto Place. So our comp plan has always been looking for a way to get these areas out to a signal. So as you can imagine, or anybody who's experienced it, coming out of Murdochs or, you know, think of all these residences, there's a lot of elderly in here, trying to hang a left on the Townsend, most hang a right and do a U-turn. So those evolved between city's comp plan and U dots, or not U, Old State, C dots. That was only a decade ago.
You haven't slipped.
It's, it's in there. It's deep. C dots, access control plans are all interested in these kind of regional connections to make this work. So that kind of prompted us to look at that and start talking to the Marketplace Stores, which then prompted this MOA. We didn't want to invest a lot in the southern reach and not have, it would still be beneficial, but it's even more beneficial if we can get it up to Encanto because that gives the ability to drain Murdochs and those residential areas. So what we do have envisioned for this area is kind of a glorified alley. It's a pretty tight area. It's, it's not meant to be a main thoroughfare. Nobody will be addressed off of it. It's essentially a baggage road to allow those areas to drain and have access down to the roundabout. It's still twelve-foot lanes, so typical lane widths. You have to pipe a ditch, but it adds a sidewalk in the area. We set it up so that you can keep a lot of the truck access in their apron all intact. And this just becomes a drive over curb down to a street. So we're, we're widening to the east to make this fit and kind of makes good use of the space and gives a good, I was surprised in all the work we've done back there. A lot of pedestrians walk through there already. So it gives them a sidewalk, a safe place to be while still kind of maintaining all the rear access to the buildings. And then from an economic standpoint, I think, you know, there's, I think a win-win here. So we see it from a regional transportation, safety, convenience standpoint. From the economic side, I think on their side, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they'd agree that there's good benefit in maintaining good access to your business. And so if businesses get impossible to get out of, you know, eventually people will find something else. And we don't, we don't want that to happen. They don't want that to happen. So we, we believe it's a win-win for all those involved. What the MOA is doing is kind of setting up the framework for this project to happen as a future phase of what we're doing now. So it's kind of worded that if we elect to move forward, and what we're looking at is in twenty twenty-five's budget season, we would look at starting the project. So if council were to adopt in, for twenty twenty-five budget design and start of the construction, that they would then agree to dedicate a, we're calling it a right of way easement, which is kind of an oxymoron. But we don't want to do fee simple land because it would mess with the setbacks of that building. And so this documents that it's, and within that, that'd be a whole nother agreement that we would go into. But it, you know, allows for public use, public thoroughfare for the vehicles and the pedestrians to go through there, and the city would maintain it. And so because it's a public thoroughfare, we would maintain everything from that, you know, kind of cut line out as a, as a city street. So there's some benefit for them there in that they don't have to maintain that alley in trade for us being able to allow people to go through there from a public standpoint. Because what we don't want is to have the connection just at the south and then everybody zigzags our way out the front where all the pedestrians are walking either. So trying to, you know, make the best fit long range for all of these areas. The way, yeah, the way the agreement said, if, so say that doesn't happen, the essentially agreement just falls off and we have the ability to revisit if priorities change or timelines change. So it's, there's, it's, it's, there's no hard financial commitment at this point. It's just kind of memorializing the intent to move forward with the next phase of this project. And we want the protection to, you know, start spending money on the planning of that to make sure that we can get the right of way. They want, they don't want to just give us the right of way and not get a project either. So it's kind of meant to make sure both of our interests are protected. And with that, I think that's a high financial.
Can you make sure you're speaking? I thought you had a real question. Never mind. Does anyone have an actual question?
Actually, kind of, yes. So the sidewalk will be on the east side of that. And that, so that's going to allow walkability and access from those apartments down to the public transit system. So that's going to be one of our little check marks that we've had for quite some time. I think the other, the other benefit is we just recently did the customer satisfaction survey, as it were. And one of the things that would mention was traffic congestion. And I think this does a great job of alleviating a lot of that traffic coming out on Encanto and eventually on Church.
Yeah, Encanto, Church, and Montrose Drive are all kind of affected by what goes on here.
Yeah. To give, to give the ability for people to actually come out and try to turn left at a, at a stoplight, I think is hugely beneficial.
Yeah, it's definitely something people talk about is the inability to get out of that shopping area, this parking lot. So this is a good solution, given there's not a lot of space there, is there?
No. Yeah. And the next, I mean, the next iteration would be to the east, but you start getting so far back that people aren't likely to backtrack enough to go back down.
Correct.
So it's, it's, we, yeah, we're pleased they're open to working with us. And I think it's, I think it's a win-win for sure.
And one thing I would like to also mention is that in the packet, it mentions that the eventual long-term goal is to make that connection from Niagara all the way down.
Yep. The comp, the comp plan has it up to Niagara. I think realistically, it'd probably be Montrose Drive. One thing we need to be careful of, if there is a connection to Niagara, it'll probably be kind of somewhat circuitous so that it doesn't become a shortcut. Because you don't want everybody avoiding Townsend to come through here. That would be problematic. So that's something we're very cognizant of, not getting out ahead of our skis and putting volume in an area that this isn't supposed to.
Yeah, traffic loading where it's not built for it.
Yep. Yep. Because this is intended to just be kind of a local drain.
This is a drain from the parking lot, not an access, not a thoroughfare arterial.
Not an alternate route to Townsend.
But being able to come from the eastern portions, the eastern subdivisions, Cobble Creek, not Cobble Creek, Bridges and all the subdivisions out there and be able to get into this parking lot without having to go back out on Townsend. And it's going to reduce our, a little bit of the traffic loading at that stoplight, turning right.
Yeah. What you're getting a lot of Townsend is, yeah, down and then U-turn. So, you know, you're congesting both sides.
Both sides.
So, yeah, two for. So for every one we take off, we take two off of Townsend and kind of thing. And not to mention the safety side of it.
It is an exciting project. Any other council comments or questions about this one? Okay. Thank you very much. What are we, what are we voting on? Is this just an update or is this, what's going to come to a vote?
So what would come is entering into the memorandum of agreement.
Okay.
Because essentially, you know, and that's one thing I forgot to mention, the eventual cost right now is about 1.2 million to build this phase. And that goes down to where the previous product would leave off. You know, we'll update that as we get closer. But this would just kind of be creating the framework to put this into the hopper for future planning.
Okay. Thanks.
So 1.2 for, sorry, 1.2 for Phase Two. Phase One has already been budgeted with the roundabout and the baggage to the entrance into the parking lot.
Penn Mall, yep.
So that's already on our budget, on our works.
Totally. Yep. Yep.
Thank you very much, Scott. The next item is Suburban Water Dissolution Information. And it looks like we're going to turn this over to our city attorney, Chris Dowsey, and our utilities manager, David Brees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Just as a heads up, this is not going to require any action. This is really just an informational session. You're not going to be seeing this in any other council meetings. Today, we have Justin Hauser with us. He's the president of the Board of Directors of Montrose Suburban Water District. I'll just give a brief overview of what's occurred, and then I'm going to hand it over to David Brees for more of a technical aspect of it. So Suburban Water District, they, they have been providing water to their customers since the early nineteen hundreds. In nineteen twenty-two, they came to an agreement with both the county and the city in order to create a water district to serve their, their customers. This district is within the city's water service area, not water district, right? I said it right? Perfect.
That's what we asked.
So with this, earlier this year, within their, their district, there was a water main break that needed to be fixed. After this water main break, Suburban approached the city to see if we wouldn't mind taking on their customers individually as opposed to as essentially one large entity. If the city was not able to do this, what Suburban would have to do is they would have to find a business to either take them on to then provide those services, or if they just dissolve and no one were to take this over, essentially the, the water system would fall into disrepair, which would be, you know, detrimental to the health of every customer within that, that water district. So with this in mind, after a lot of discussion and deliberation, the city came up with a blueprint in order to have the city take on these customers individually. At this point, Suburban has already met and they will be dissolving on January one, which means the city will be taking on these customers individually on January one. There are some, some things that still need to occur. We need to reach an agreement for all the assets to take on from Suburban Water to the city. And that should be buttoned up here within the next month. So that is the brief overview of what has occurred, and I'll hand it over to David.
Yeah. So there's a few things that we laid out in this whole process in order to make sure that as we take on and provide service to these customers, we're doing it in the same fashion that we do with our existing customers. First thing was, we will be replacing all the water meters out there to make sure that we have accurate water meters that are metering the water. And we'll also install our AMI system, our automated meter interface, with our Aqua Hawk system, which will be available to the customers. And in one of our meetings out there, when I was talking to some of the customers, they, we're, we're really excited about that access because currently, Suburban bills every other month. And so they could have a leak going on for quite some time and get, get shocked with a fairly large water bill without any prior knowledge of it. And so with this system, I think we can improve the level of service to those customers and the level of information that they get in order to minimize their water bills and stuff. So that will be probably taking place in, in January, January, February. Our plan, the plan is that Suburban will read the water meters at the end of the year, and we'll send out bills for their water use through the end of January. The end of January, we will read the meters and then we will start billing them the first of February when we send out all of our city water bills. And then any of the past due amounts that are owed to Suburban at the end of January will then be transferred onto their city account in order to continue billing them so that there isn't any customer that just says, you know, I'm not going to pay my water bill since I know Suburban is dissolving and nobody's going to collect it. It will be rolled into their, their city water bill so that we will be made whole for all of those costs.
What's the boundaries of that district?
The boundaries are primarily on the west, about sixty-four hundred, just west of sixty-four hundred, over by Waterfall Canyon, over to, and they serve a few customers on the east side of Chapita, primarily from Spring Creek Road and just maybe a little bit north of Spring Creek to just south of Orchard Road.
Are these properties in or outside of our city limits?
They are. Most of them are outside of the city limits. There's, I think, three of the properties that are actually inside the city limits that are served by Suburban Water.
Well, will we be?
So we all have the same question?
Yeah.
So I'll, okay.
Everyone outside the city limits pays a higher water rate. Will that carry over to this?
Right. Yes. They, they will continue, they will pay based on city ordinances and city standards, the outside of the city water rate for those customers outside of the city. And that's very comparable to what they're actually paying now with, through Suburban. Because Suburban buys their water from us, marks it up in order to sell it to them in an effort to be nonprofit, to, to cover their cost.
Well, if there's a lot of repair work required out there, how is that going to be covered financially?
Well, that, again, we would recover that by the, the increased rates, the, the one hundred and fifty percent of inside city rates that we would collect from those individual customers that would, would generate some additional revenue to pay back all the meter replacement, the AMI system, as well as any other out of the ordinary repairs that aren't covered under the normal, normal rates. I've been looking at some of their data here just recently. And in fact, we helped them fix a leak here last Monday. fix a leak here last Monday. Prior to that, their water loss, in other words, after you subtracted from what they bought from us, what they sold to their customers, was in the 40% to 50%. So, but once we fixed that leak here last Monday, that dropped that down into about 15%. So it's getting down, our water loss across our system is under 10%, and that's kind of the industry standard, the target, to try to keep those water losses, you know, under, less than that 10%. So I think that, you know, as part of the meter changeout, we will be doing some leak detection on, you know, because I think that's probably where their leaks are, are on service lines, where they've got a small leak on a service line. We're going to be, we've got some leak detection equipment, so we'll be listening for leaks on all of those services as we're changing out those meters and have the service shut off for that house. And so then we will focus on those, that we hear leak sounds on those, to try to get out there and identify where those leaks are and get those fixed, because at that point in time, it's to our benefit to reduce that water loss, as opposed to, we were selling it to Suburban, if they had 40% water loss, we were still getting paid for our water.
So because they currently buy water from us, it would be no additional drain on our system?
Right, right. We currently are providing all the water to Suburban Water.
How many customers is it?
331, I believe, is what the latest number I've seen.
Thanks.
One other thing that is spelled out in this agreement that I like is the fact that, and I just wanted to highlight this, that the customers that are not currently inside-city limits, this isn't going to be an automatic annexation.
Right.
That they are not going to be annexed into the city. We are just providing clean, potable water. However, should they wish to be annexed into the city, there is a process in place for them to apply for annexation, but we don't just go out and annex people randomly.
Right, right. And that's, I think, one of the things that most of the customers out there were pleasantly surprised to find out that we weren't going to require annexation as a condition of us providing water to them. And I think, you know, that's, you know, they want to live that rural lifestyle, they want, that they're used to living out there, and I think we, by providing water, don't, you know, we continue to provide them that opportunity to do that, and provide, you know, good quality water, and spread those costs for, if there is future main breaks and stuff, we have the resources that we can repair them, where they were hiring outside contractors to do work on an emergency basis, and outside contractors, when you're working on an emergency basis, that cost goes through the roof.
But if any of those customers elect to be annexed into the city, then their water rates would drop accordingly, right?
Their water rates would drop to within the city water rates, but they would need to meet all of those other requirements that are required for annexation, with the continuity and, 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 and all, and the city's desire to annex those properties.
Currently, the city regulations, I believe...
I believe only require annexations if they hook onto a sewer line, am I, or has it been changed?
Typically, typically, it comes with any kind of utility use, except for these cases where their existing, well-established neighborhoods built the county standards. That's where that exception is allowed, and that is an exception with the 1.5X is a provision in our code. River Woods is a good example, so River Woods is just kind of northwest of this district. They had a failed water system, they came on to city water, they were within our district, but we left them in the county, because it's a county subdivision, for all intents and purposes. You know, for us to maintain it and then change it to city standards after the fact is really cost prohibitive, and, you know, frankly, kind of unfair to the rest of our ratepayers, you know, our taxpayers. And so it's a good middle, it allows for a good middle ground, in my opinion.
Do we know what kind of condition this water system is in?
It's, it's, it's in decent condition. A lot of it was replaced back in the late 80s. I've recently gotten a couple of the maps from, from them that have some of the lines that have been replaced. Obviously, when the original district was created in 1922, there, there isn't, I don't think, any of the pipes out there that were installed originally that are still in place. A lot of it is PVC pipe, and meets most of our standards, other than it doesn't meet the size requirements that we would require for fire protection and stuff.
And there are probably elements and areas in our city that don't meet our current standards, too. Just be fair and honest.
Right, right. And I think the big thing is, is, yeah, there, being a rural-type development, they don't have the same density as we have in many of the newer, or many of the city service area, and that's part of the reason why the rates have to be set at a higher rate for those rural areas, is because we're maintaining more footage of pipe for each customer.
I think part of the question Ed had dealt with sanitary sewer, we do have places within the city limits that are not on the city sewer, but many times, if their septic system fails, the state or the county may require them to tie on to, to a sewer system. So those, those are situations that can exist.
Yeah, and this area is also served on, West Montrose Sanitation District has sewers that run through this area. I'm not sure how many or if, if many of these customers are on the West Montrose system, but I know there's some of them that are on the West Montrose, some of those newer developments out on Nancy Drive, and some of that, I believe, are served by West Montrose Sanitation.
Any other comments or questions from council on this item? Okay, and like you pointed out, to start us off with, this was an informational item, does not require a council vote, but it is definitely something we needed to be in the loop on, so we could better understand what's going on, especially if we heard comments or questions about it. So thank you for bringing this to us. I don't know. Does our guest have any comments? Okay, next on our agenda item is 2024 Asphalt Crushing Award Recommendation. Thank you. This is Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So yes, we're getting some contracts set up for winter work, and this is, this is one of them. We would be using this contractor to crush our asphalt pile that we have stored in our pit, which is an old gravel pit up on Sunset Mesa. So this, the asphalt currently is pieces of asphalt that's been removed from streets, from patches or large-scale projects, and it's often in bigger chunks and pieces that are useful but not able to be processed through our recycler or for road-based projects, things like that. So we would crush the pile, and then we would use it for those things, millings trails, gravel road resurfacing, base work, or our asphalt recycler uses the same asphalt millings or a crushed asphalt. And so we issued an RFP for this service. There are contractors in the area that provide this, and so we did receive three proposals. And in the packet, you can see I'm recommending a ward to Rocky Mountain Aggregate. I would point out that their rate per ton was, was higher than the others proposed. There were just some significant red flags in the others that moved our scoring system to point towards Rocky Mountain Aggregate as being the contract that we'd recommend for this service. And so we budgeted $200,000 for this service in 2024, and so we are recommending awarding the contract with a not to exceed up to that amount. We don't anticipate that that will crush our entire pile. We're not exactly sure, but we're estimating this would be a little bit over half, and we'll then be able to budget the remaining amount following year or even years later, as, what we'll be able to crush with this contract will give us a substantial supply for several years. So with that, I would take any questions, if there are any.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
What was one of the ray of flags that you come up with, this dirtwork construction? It seems like 425 a ton is, and the rating was not that bad, that would knock them out of contention for this work, you know? That's half price.
Yeah.
They'd be doing our crushing for half price, and maybe we could crush more.
Yeah, no, you're right. It's something we debated quite a lot, because it is a, you know, significantly lower rate. There were issues with their references that we checked, as well as the equipment that they proposed. On basically every level, came up as something that we thought was not a great approach to the project, and therefore, and we use a scoring system for this reason, to this, the cost and experience and equipment are all weighted within our scoring metrics, and we assign scores accordingly. So if their fee proposal is the lowest in this case, they would receive a very high score for that. But if their references come back very poorly, they would receive a very low score for that, and that's what this score at the end here shows, is it's compiling all of those, the proposed equipment, their project approach, and their price, all combined, and those things considered. So even though their price would have scored very high, because it's the lowest price, the other things pulled it down much further, and we use that matrix for this reason, to show us that, that not always is the lowest cost something that we should award. If there's other major issues in a proposal, that we should not consider it. And I think that's where this is. It's borderline being disqualified, I would say, because of the proposal. We did receive it, I'd say it is, it was complete, but was scored very low.
Are we currently using Rocky Mountain Aggregate?
No, I don't believe we are using them currently.
Have we used them in the past?
Have we? Not that I'm aware of. I don't know of a contract we've had with them. They usually work for a contractor we may use, so they are working in the area, they are based here in Montrose, but I guess I don't know of a contract that we've had with them directly.
Does our local preference have points have anything to do with their selection as well?
It did not play into it, as that the numbers were significantly apart, so they were not within 5% of each other.
This is one of those times where you get what you pay for, right?
Yeah, we believe so. We debated a lot about it, because it is a relatively low-risk type of work, I mean, crushing asphalt, but we do have a process for a reason, and so we really stuck to it and did it as accurately as we could, and we felt like this is the best route.
I appreciate understanding the explanation that the score reflects the rate. So it isn't like, here's the rate, and here's the score for everything else, now make a decision. The score is only as high as it is because of the rate. So that's helpful to understand. Any other council comments or questions on this? Okay, we'll be looking forward to this coming to council for a vote, at which time we will accept public comment, so if anyone thinks of anything else, or any members from the public wish to comment, that would be the time. Okay, next up, 2024 Baldridge Park Master Plan Award Recommendation, and this is also our Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
Yeah, and Dan Payne will be joining me as well. So as you said, this is for our Baldridge Park Master Plan Update. We are recommending a ward to, it's a long name, so I'll abbreviate, but this is Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker out of Portland, Maine. So we may use BDM and P, just as a, or I may just not say it anymore, because it's such a long name. So as, as you know, Baldridge Park is, I included a map here with this recommendation for reference, but this is our largest park in our, in our system, includes several other smaller parks, but for reference, this is Cerise Park, River Bottom, Sunset Mesa, Uton McNeil Fields, and Holly Park, some of which, most of which is city parks, and some of those are Rec District-owned properties. These parks include many amenities in our town, like dog parks, water sports park, skate park, pump track, disc golf course, Montrose Rotary Amphitheater, soft surface trails, and concrete trails. The point being that this is a very busy and focus of our park system, includes most of our parks within the city. And it is, I would say, a centerpiece, something that we focus a lot of our attention on, whether it be maintenance or even events and things like that. So there have been several updates over the past several years to, or things added to the park and updates made, like River Bottom Restroom was reconstructed a few years back, and the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater added just a couple years ago. There are several other systems within the park that are reaching their end of life and are needing replacements, like playgrounds, irrigation systems, other facilities, things like that. But prior to rebuilding those systems as a direct replacement, we're updating this Baldridge Park Master Plan to account for changes that may have occurred or future changes in use, and to also accommodate best practices in water conservation, accessibility, and park design. So we issued an RFP for this service as well, and we received five proposals. And then, similar, we score these on experience, team-proposed, project approach, and the approach and strategy for the project definitely includes a lot of community engagement, so it'll definitely be a large portion of this project. And then, of course, their fee. So similarly, those things are all rated on a weighted scale, and, and in this case, BDM and P came out as our highest scoring, and they were also able to meet our schedule requirements for the project. And so with that, I would say we are recommending a ward. It was well under budget, and we also have funding assistance from the Rec District in, in this project, because again, they are a partner on this, they own several of the facilities that would be included, and we share use of a lot of city-owned, like Cerise Park, city-owned, but shared use with the Rec District. Parking lots are often shared, access to the park is shared, so they are a partner on the project. And Dan Payne is here as well to answer any specific questions we may have about the RFP, as he was the one that masterminded this thing, so if any, any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any question? Any questions from council or comments?
The one question I have is, all of the other applicants are people from Colorado, and these guys are from Maine. Are they aware that water doesn't actually fall from the sky here?
The people that'll be working on this project actually live in Colorado.
The people in this project will be people that work or live in Colorado.
So we won't be seeing a U-Haul come in with main plates on it?
Right.
When would it be completed, the master plan?
By the end of the year. So we're targeting completion in 2024.
This is great. I know this is a project that we've been working on with the Rec District since I was on the Rec District Board, just talking about, we keep wanting to do things, but we're like, we, we need a master plan for this whole park. So like, we've made some improvements along the way, but really, we need to approach it from the big picture, so excited to see this happening. Yeah, that's great. It'll help give us a direction of how it's used, where we're going, what needs to stay, what needs to change.
Yeah, it's exciting, for sure.
It's great. Anything else?
One question I had also is, the current skate park, is that a part of the consideration of whether to use it there, move it, keep it?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the park system, so it'll definitely be evaluated, yeah, use and condition and all of that, so, yeah, it's definitely included in the master plan.
Use and condition, and the fact that that was GoCo funds that are tied up. If we change it, we need to give that money back. Let's not forget that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's important to point out, too, I think the amount of usage that our park systems get around here is exceptional, and we, we see them being used year-round.
Agreed. And we've seen quite an increase in usage as well. We've, interestingly, are able to measure that through usage of doggy bags, so the increase in usage of bags is kind of a key for us to say how much more has been used in the last few years, and it's definitely increasing year-over-year.
It's definitely used, and it's fun. In my head, I play a little game called Park Bingo, which is to see how many different kinds of users there are. Like, there's a box for somebody fishing, there's a box for someone biking, there's a box for someone on those hoverboard, you know, like, it's just amazing that it isn't all used the same way. It's used in such a variety of ways. It's kind of fun to see how many uses, and hopefully, this process, you mentioned community engagement, but I think that's going to be really important, because this is a well-loved, well-used park complex, and I think our residents are really going to want to weigh in on what they would like to see stay or change, so I'm glad to see that's part of it.
I appreciate you not bringing up old people napping down here.
Old people napping, I'll add... I'll add that to my bingo list. Okay. No further questions on this one? Okay, great. We'll move on. Okay, designation of official posting locations. This looks pretty straightforward, but I think we do this every year. So City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. You are correct, this is a housekeeping issue. We are required at the first regular meeting of every year to designate our official posting locations, and since twenty twenty, we have designated our website and the Bulletin Board at City Hall as a secondary location. But just to be clear, we post all public meeting agendas on the website and the, and the bulletin boards, and we also post potential quorum notices and Spanish language agendas for city council and work session on the exterior bulletin board as well.
Thank you. And when you say exterior bulletin board, are we talking about the one in the ATM foyer, and is that available twenty-four seven to folks?
Absolutely. That is available twenty-four seven, and all agendas are posted there. If council agrees, we could add this to a consent agenda on the January second regular meeting agenda?
As council amenable to adding this to consent agenda for our next January meeting. Great, looks like we can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there, those were our, our listed discussion items, so we'll move down into general city council discussions. Anyone from city council want to add anything for discussion today or bring up a topic?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, I got multiple. I'm going to go here to the mayor pro tem, and I'll go back over here.
I, I just would like to give kudos to Jim Shide and his crew for the Buckley Park ribbon cutting on Saturday morning. That's, I think that's the first playground grand opening I've attended in the snow, but, but the kids didn't seem to mind it. So that was great. Thanks for doing that, and for everybody in your department that contributed to it. I'd also like to thank all of city staff that was engaged in the parade of lights. I thought staff did an excellent job, and it was, it was a very good parade, long parade, but a very good parade. And thanks particularly to the Police Department for providing public safety, outstanding job. I might also comment, too, that for the Saturday morning ribbon cutting, I don't know, for those of you that were there, did you notice that all of the police officers who were on duty Saturday morning showed up for the ribbon cutting, which I thought was really cool? So anyway, those are my two cents.
Thank you very much. And then Mr. Ullbert.
Okay, I just have a question. I was over at Cedar, Cedar Cemetery, and I noticed that weeds or leaves were all blocking the bridge that normally goes across to the other side where they store the dirt or handle the cemetery, the grave digging and all that stuff. And I was just curious just to, it was my understanding that, that, that the pipe or the bridge itself was going out, and just out of curiosity, is it on? I didn't see it on the, on the move-mo or any of those other ones, and I'm still kind of trying to figure that out on the computer, so I thought it'd probably be easier for me to just ask.
Yeah, yeah, its replacement is scheduled to start fourth quarter twenty-four.
Okay.
So twenty-four, going into twenty-five, so we'd like to do them during the lower season when the water's way down.
Right.
By the time everything is approved, they didn't have enough time to do it on this year's winter shutdown, so we're doing it next year's winter shutdown.
Okay. Any other council members?
I'd just like to comment on what a great job I thought the guys did with the parade and the cleanup process. Looked like it was still part of the parade. That was good, too. And, and I'd like to comment that the chief did a real nice job of handling the traffic right down in front of our stand where we were judging and...
Yeah, I agree. It seems like we get a little bit better at it every year. Kind of work out a little bit of kinks, and hopefully none of those are noticed, but yeah, it seems like this was very smooth. I didn't notice any, any issues, and I like the, the sweeper follow-up as well.
I judged them very high. I gave them good scores.
It's our, the best opportunity for us to clean the street. So it's, it's very clean, it's probably the cleanest it is, is right after a parade. So, yeah.
I think that was a great, great situation all around for the whole, whole city employees because of the planning that went into it, departments and...
It definitely takes a lot of departments. I would say almost all departments are involved in the, in the planning and implementation of that. Yeah.
Anything from you? Yeah, everyone did cover it. Thank you all to staff. It was a busy city weekend across the board, I think, lots of folks working on city projects this weekend, so thank you to all of our department heads, and to please pass on the kudos to your staff members as well. They did a fantastic job. Okay, we, staff comments? I think we have a couple, or maybe. Any staff that want to bring an item forward? Mr. Shide?
I have a couple of project updates, some completions of projects. So one that you may not see is the solar panel installation on the covered parking structures at the Police Department. Those are complete. We are waiting on one small piece for the final electrical inspection, but the system is connected and, or is working, but we're not able to turn the on switch until we receive this one piece. About a week is what I'm being told right now. So it's a very small separation for electrical versus data portion of the system, but, but the installation is done and should be actually on and functioning here, I would say, within a couple of weeks. So that was another big one, checked off the list. You may not see it, but it's there. So that one is done. I wanted to mention also the Buckley Park Playground Grand Opening. That was, that was a great opening. I think I had a good time. I know all the kids had a good time. Even though it was snow on the ground, it didn't slow anybody down, so that was, that was great. So thank you all for everybody that attended, and, and thanks to Dan Payne. He, again, masterminded that one as well. So that's been a year-long project. We started procurement last December and finally checking that one off the list, so. Also, another one that was completed recently is the Ogden and Woodgate Roundabout Landscaping was installed, which looks really cool. So there's a sculpture there. We'll be naming him Eddie, and so really neat feature, although it's a, it's a cool addition. And so anyway, now that roundabout was probably not our best-looking landscape in the past, and now I'd say it is the best-looking. I'm a fan, so that one's been completed just this last week. I also want to give an update on the Veterans Memorial Coalition that we had an MOU established with. They have requested to withdraw from our MOU, which is allowed. Our MOU is able to be terminated by either party, so that is a, a process that's allowed. We have not been able to have much other communication with the group. We don't really know the reason why or the plan moving forward. Like I said, we've had very little ability to communicate. So as of now, though, I am assuming our MOU is terminated, so.
Did they put that in writing?
They did, yeah. We received that through email.
Thank you. I want to circle back to the roundabout and the playground, and I want to, kudos to you guys, but those did involve community input. The playground had some stakeholder meetings, and even the sculpture at the roundabout was a decision made by anyone who showed up to a DART meeting a few months ago. So it, it looks great, and you guys made it happen, but it, it wasn't just that Dan and I got together and picked up that sculpture. That was, you, you gave a number of options to a, a large room of people who talked about each option and weighed the pros and cons and the costs, and, and that was a public community decision on that. And I think that's really cool to know, kind of, when people say, who picked that, or why is it that, that that was done by our community.
Definitely, and I think on the, the playground example, the fence that's around the playground is a good example of that. That's, actually was not designed in there initially. We received that through community engagement feedback and how that would be a very valuable thing to have there. It fit well into the, into the project and was a simple add, really, and now is a very effective piece of the playground that honestly, we did not envision that originally. So it was a benefit that came from those community engagement meetings.
Which is just a testament to the fact that the community engagement is really valuable. It makes our project stronger, whether it's a fence at a park, or input into the budget process, or input into what our priorities are for the following year, and we are always welcoming that, that community engagement, whether it's a formal meeting that we set up and ask the public to put stickers on poster board, or whether it's simply an email or feedback that someone may send to council. We always appreciate it. It makes our, our plans better. Thank you. Okay, are there any other staff comments or updates? Then I will say we are adjourned. This was our last work session of twenty twenty-three, and tomorrow night is our last city council meeting for twenty twenty-three. See you all there. Thank you.